Well, it is 7:01. Thank you very much. This is the October 21st, 2021, Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. Per advice by council, and I have a motion to open the second.
Move to open the meeting.
Second.
Okay, on favor Jeff.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Now Paul.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
You might as well, the meeting is open. All right, now if I could please ask the town administrator to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll amend or approve the agenda. And then a period of public comment with Diana Hope, Veterans Agent, and Pam Douse Collector. And then the first item of the agenda is the consent agenda with payroll warrant, draft minutes of September 23rd, and setting next meeting dates of November 4th and November 18th. The second item is award of borrowing anticipation note with Heidi Doyle Treasurer. Third item is consideration of appointments, Disability Advisory Committee with Kathleen Horgan for a term to expire June 15th, 2024, and Frank Hess for a term to expire June 15th, 2024. And I believe those are both reappointments. And Energy and Sustainability Committee, Frank Hope for a term to expire June 15th, 2024. Item four is consideration to authorize a vote in favor of the four members of the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization. Item five, consideration of approval of new annual appointment process, Vicky Relis from Personnel Board. Item six, consideration of routine business, the select board report and town administrator report and then adjourn.
Thank you very much. Did you read the executive session? All right, thank you very much, David.
I did not read the executive session. You won't.
You know, if you could please.
I usually do.
Yeah, usually do, yeah.
Okay, let me read it. Adjourn to executive session. Item one, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts, 444, year 2007. Item two, review of executive session minutes of August 12th, 2021, August 26, 2021, prior to the trial start of the public session, August 26, 2021, after public session, and September 9th, 2021, for approval and possible release. That's it. Sorry about that.
No, thank you very much, sir. Do I have any motions or recommendations for the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
So move to second. All in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Now Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank you very much. Okay, two public comments. First on this is Diana Hook. Diana, please feel free.
Good evening, Diana Hook, Sixth Town Line Road here in my capacity as the Veterans Agent, bringing to the boards, the select board's attention, the Veterans Day celebration that we have planned as a Veterans Day open house. And while I say open house, because we are planning to have it in the select board room, and that's only so big, and we are conscious of current conditions with respect to the pandemic, we're limiting, going to limit the invitees to veterans and a guest. And our town has 122 veterans. We don't expect that all of them will show up and they'll be invited to the open house to meet me, their new Veterans Agent, and to thank Doug for his services and to have a buffet lunch if they so choose. And I also would like to extend that invitation to the select board that should you want to come and say thank you to the veterans sometime on November 11th at 11 o'clock through noon sometime, to please stop by and you can also have lunch.
That's very nice. Thank you much, Dan. Does anyone have any questions on it?
Just a comment. I wanted to commend her and others for organizing this event. I think it's important that we recognize our veterans. I think Veterans Day is an important day. It's one that we have established now a precedent of having a town event each year. And it's, in the past, it's been a wonderful occasion for veterans to come together and see each other and so on. So kudos to our new Veterans Agent for putting this together and good luck.
Oh, well, thank you, Paul. Of course, I'm part of a committee. Also need to thank Diane Moore and Doug Brody. And this is going to be a bit more than last year, but not quite the full shebang as we've done in years past. Perhaps in 2022, we can go back to how we used to celebrate it when things are a little clearer. But yes, we did want to recognize the veterans and I do want to meet everyone so that they're comfortable reaching out to me should they need assistance with any related affairs.
Again, thank you very much, Diana. Very nice. Up next is Pam Douse, Town Collector.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, it's so dark, but I'm actually out at the orchard at a little fire pit. So I'm being Town Collector from the orchard tonight, reminding everybody that taxes are due on Monday, November 1st. And you can pay them online and we do now offer some auto pay options too. And you can pay by bringing it into the town hall, dropping it off on the mailbox. And we do accept credit cards now too. I just wanted to put the little reminder out there that second quarter was due on May, November 2nd. That's it.
Very good. Thank you very much, Pam. Put that on our calendar.
Thank you.
Okay, without any further ado, we're on to agenda item number one, consent agenda. Do I have any motions or modifications relative to the consent agenda? Well, actually, I have one. Is there anyone else have any comments other than the motions approved? I have a comment on it. Yes, I have the same, same comment I have, but go ahead, Paul.
No, my comment is that I had previously told the board that I could not attend on November 4th. And we all said we, we take a look at things as we get closer to that date. I have a pretty good record of attending all the select board meetings and I hate to miss one.
And that was exactly my comment and I do remember you saying that. And we had a point of which we kind of modified it, but then we thought about it and thought we modified things too quickly to go from twice a month to every other week. The board wanted to hear to every other week, which landed us back on November 4th. So in fairness, I'm going to ask the board if there is consideration. Do we want to adjust anything on the 4th? I know we can't make the 7th or the 11th because that is Veterans Day, we just spoke about. Which is kind of one of the reasons we actually shifted back because when we went that other route, we wound up landing on every single holiday that there was for rest of the year. So is there any?
Week. What about October 28th?
We have enough for an agenda next week. I mean, our agenda is kind of late this week. It's.
Yeah, Diane, how's it looking? I see you shaking your head, but I'm going to ask you to speak.
Muted.
I probably don't have a lot. What I'm holding off on is to set a joint appointment with the school committee and I really need to be able to do that till like after November 1st. Because I need the 30-day posting for the vacancy.
That's right. So the school, just the school committee is, yeah, the 30-day vacancy, they'll be interviewing, I think, late, probably right on the 22nd to some degree. And then they're going to come before us and join us on a co-vote for a recommendation for a new school committee member. And that was scheduled for the 4th. Is that the main agenda item? I think that's the main thing that I'm aware of.
That, yes, that is the main agenda item is the joint appointment.
And I know on the 3rd, Wednesday, now to go off the Thursday thing, we have the training.
If we went to the November 11th, yeah, that's Veterans Day. So we have to go to the 18th, you're saying, if we went a week after that.
When we're out of, yeah, we already have a meeting for the 18th, so.
Yeah. Paul, how, if we met at 8:00 PM or something on the 4th, is that, is your meeting go the same time as the select board?
It's a special town meeting. There's 23 warrant articles.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
There's three zoning.
What if, what if we keep our, what if we do the November 4th and maybe try to keep it to just the school committee appointment or something like that? And Paul can give us feedback ahead of time. Just try to keep our agenda very, very light so we stay on our schedule. But Paul doesn't really miss anything other than like one that's kind of critical that we keep moving along.
Well, one that I want to, I want to vote on the school committee thing.
No, I understand that, Paul, but we also can't have one meeting in November and hold up the school committee for two weeks because you have another agenda item. I think that's why we have a five-member board. Unfortunately, sometimes some of us are going to miss things.
I mean, can we do, can we do 6 o'clock? I know some, I know some people had issues with earlier, but I think that that's not as much anymore. Could you do a 6 o'clock, Paul, if everyone else can do a 6 o'clock? If just one item essentially?
Probably. I have a select board meeting that starts at 6, but I can, I can step out of that for 15 minutes.
What about, what about 5 o'clock? Is that possible?
5 is too early for me. I can't do 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
I could do 6. That's a, that's, I could do 6 on the 4th if you need to.
Yeah, we said.
Maybe.
Essentially, you could do a one agenda item, essentially, you know? And, and you could actually tune off if we wind up doing some kind of like select.
If we do 6, we do 6, I'll probably be in the car and I'd have to do it from my phone.
6:15 and like that, and I don't know. Let's try and get a solution.
It's really tight for Paul if there's any discussion.
Paul, can you make your special town meeting one big agenda, consent agenda?
I keep proposing that even for our, it's one motion to adopt all the articles, but nobody seems to be grabbing at that.
All right, I'm just trying to get to a solution here because we, we did agree to shift it, then we shifted it back. And I do recognize that and Paul had the conflict on the 4th. I don't know if it's fair to have George do it from his car, you know, I mean, and stuff like that. So I'm just trying to find some reasonable solution, solution here. Is there anything we can do in the middle here? It is something I would like to resolve. We've been talking about it for a while.
Doesn't seem like it because the 28th is just next week and we don't have that, we won't have the school finished by then probably. And the week after that is the 4th and the week after that is the Veterans Day. So there might be leftover food on Veterans Day. We could have a in-person meeting.
So what about earlier on the day on, on the 4th, like in the morning, just on the school committee thing?
That would, you'd have to check with the school committee members. A lot of us were, I mean, I'm sure they work as well as I do, but I could, I could squeeze in a meeting that day if we get it on the calendar now from my office, but I would have, you'd have to check with the school committee members to see if they could meet during the day.
What about? I think the public, though, the public probably would want to hear it.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there's multiple candidates for this position, so it's fair.
What about before or after the 3rd? I mean, after the training, before or after the training on the 3rd?
That's good for me that I could do it.
What time is the training?
6:30.
6:30, yeah.
Would the training be postponed for an hour?
I think too many people are coming. Last time, what was it? 75 people showed up to the last training, I think.
And this, this training is really important and I think people need to focus on it.
It's scheduled from 6:30 to 8 for 90 minutes.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to pile another big issue on top of the training because I think it's really important that people focus on the training.
We could, actually, that's a good point. If it ends at 8, we could do the select board meeting at 8 o'clock. We're probably all going to be available, all going to be there. We'll get an audience of 75 people, you know, because they got nothing else going on.
I'm good at 8. I can do that.
Is there any thoughts on making this meeting immediately after the training?
It works for me.
The only thing, once again, is the public gonna, you know, is that, is it late for people if they want to hear the school committee?
Yeah, I do, I do agree with you on that, Jeff. We've, we are in a good routine of every other week. And people know when select board meetings are, and I think that's an important precedent to keep.
I think going to 6 on Thursday makes, because there's least.
I can check, I just need to check with my wife. If she can pick up my daughter from La Crosse, I could probably get home. I'll leave work early to get home so I can be on the meeting or stay. But I just, I, I have, right now, I'm committed to pick her up at 6 in Milford, but I can, I can see if my wife can do that.
It gives us a little time, but I think that's the best option myself.
Yep, I agree.
November 4th at 6.
At 6.
So anyone just, do you want to, um, George, you want to check? This is something we can actually, I think we can set this offline. We can schedule, I believe, we just did the open meeting law, the training, if I remember that correctly. I believe we can set meetings offline. Do you want to assume at 6 o'clock and if we have to bail and make it?
Six unless, and I'll let you know if there's an issue, but I'll just assume I can make it at 6.
Okay, thank you for being flexible. Thank you for doing this.
Right, I had an agenda item scheduled for the 4th as well, but it's not crucial. It can be postponed as long as we need it, so.
Okay. Okay, so that's the plan for now. So the meeting dates ironically consent agenda remains unchanged.
I move, I move approval of the consent agenda as shown.
Okay. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, on favor Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Bye.
George?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, agenda item number two, Heidi Doyle on awarding of borrowing, in a borrowing anticipation note.
Thank you. Good evening. So this is refinancing the 1.6 million for the library and then adding in the 2020 and 2021 capital article items that were voted at town meeting, which were mainly road improvements, building, stormwater, and some highway items. Not the full capacity, but the amount that will be used in the next year. So this note I've put out to bid to time with the Pine Hill School Band that is coming up in August. So I have asked for this bid to go all these items to go up to August and then the goal is to go for a long-term borrowing in August when we see more where we are with the library and Pine Hill Access Road. The bond market is interesting. I actually put this one out with no request for premium to see what we get. We had a mix. We had mainly people asking, offering a premium, but then the net calculation was actually a little higher. And the bond market, what we're seeing is that on the bigger bonds, they're not bidding the full amount, like we're not getting one person to bid the full amount. But we actually did pretty well. We got one bid. We had a very low bid of 0.29%, which is fantastic for us. And so I'm asking for a motion to award the borrowing anticipation note for $3,324,906 to Norwood Bank at par value and accrued interest from October 27th, 2021 to August 24th, 2022, and accept the provisions of the vote of the Select Board section received from Bond Council Lock Lord. And that was in your packet. I tried to send that ahead of you because this is a larger bond, we had to have more paperwork. So I'm asking for that motion, then I'll work on the signing part.
I'll, I'll make that motion to move to award the borrowing anticipation note for $3,324,906 to Norwood Bank at par value and accrued interest from October 27th, 2021 to August 24th, 2022, and accept the provisions of the vote of the Select Board section received from Bond Council Lock Lord. And I'd also like to move for the town administrator to sign on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Okay.
Under discussion.
Um, yeah, Paul, do you have further discussion?
Yes. First, I'm going to say I'm going to vote for this. Thank Heidi for getting a good bond rate. But what I wanted to say is that my other towns are looking at the articles that have gotten voted at town meeting, the capital articles. And rather than going out and borrowing for them, they're looking for ways to apply ARPA funds to it and to reduce the borrowings that's being done. And so I've sat through meetings where people are going through a two-step process with the ARPA funds where they, they put on a request for reimbursement for lost revenues and then use the payment for the lost revenues to pay for some of these items. And when I look at the list of items that we have here, there are some nice big items as compared to last week when we were doing the ARPA funds. We had these, these small little items. We have a lot of ARPA funds. And to the extent that we can make it easier on our taxpayers by using ARPA funds to cover some of the things that town meeting has voted, that benefits taxpayers and benefits the community. So, because I say I'm going to vote for this, this is a good rate and so on, but as we go forward, let's see if we can't use these ARPA funds as opposed to actually using borrowed funds.
And to clarify, sorry, go ahead, I.
Oh, no, I think that's a good suggestion and I think we could still use some ARPA funds maybe in August when some of these come up for long-term borrowing. Maybe we do not long-term borrow all the items.
Yeah, you said exactly what I was thinking, Heidi. Um, you know, I've been saying it every single week. I'd love to see the ARPA funds go essentially for who's echoing me? It's not me. Is someone else here? My two speakers on, okay. Essentially for projects we would have built, constructed anyway. And this is a perfect, perfect example of that. So in August, I would love to actually see that even, if not even beforehand. And I think it's a great idea, Paul, for these projects in particular. I really do, especially some of the resurfacing. I kind of wonder how, I think some of those may be applicable to this. And the roadway funds. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, um, to approve the, to approve the short-term borrowing. I'll go through if there's no more further discussion to take the vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Now Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Now I am I as well. All right, thank you very much, Heidi.
We want to take a vote on the having David sign for it too, I think.
That was part of your motion, though.
Okay.
You did say it in your motion, so I'm assuming.
Great, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, David, you can be there tomorrow morning so I can get this FedEx to them.
Yes.
Heidi, was this the only thing you wanted me there for tomorrow morning or is there something else?
Yes, if you're, if you would like David to sign or if you want to sign as the clerk, either one. Okay, I can, I can, you can let me know later.
Okay.
I think the clerk has to sign the certification of the votes. I don't think that can be delegated.
Oh, then fine, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, agenda item number three, consideration appointments, Disability Advisory Committee of Disability Advisory Committee, Kathleen Horgan for a term to expire June 15th, 2024, and Frank Hess also for a term to expire June 15th, 2024. Also after that, we'll be reading Energy Sustainability Committee, Frank Cook for a term to expire June 15th, 2024.
So move for all three.
Second, welcome. And a second, any further discussion? Okay, without seeing anything, I'll take the vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Thank you all for, for volunteering for these positions. I vote aye.
Very good thinking. George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And thank you as well. Thank you. Then item number four, let's just hear for a second. Consideration to authorize a vote in favor of the four members of the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization. Now, in this one here, I have a conflict, so I'm going to just sign off for a bit and Jeff will chair this, uh, this vote and discussion.
Do you want me to put you in the waiting room? Are you gonna?
There you go.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, show me there. People can see me ride a bike.
That's fine like that. I don't even know who the four members are though, David. Do we have the names that were?
I, I can tell you, Jeff, sorry. I, I put in the placeholder for this and should have included the four names, but I didn't. But I'll just give everybody an overview quickly of what this is. The Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, or here we're calling it the MPO. It's actually BRMPO. But you know, it's another one of those acronyms of which there are tons at the state. It's an elected, it's an elected board that works closely with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commissioner, MAPC, but is administratively separate from MAPC. The, uh, the MPO has as its specific charge to make decisions as to how to spend federal transportation money and transportation-related things in, in this region of the state. And this region of the state includes about 70 towns. It's all really eastern Massachusetts. So the, the MAPC and the Boston MPO are basically joined at the hip. So the MAPC, the Total Planning Organization that does kind of very broad, long-term planning for the whole region is running this election. The MPO or the transportation-focused group has about 22 voting members and a couple of of non-voting members and includes members from Mass, Mass DOT, MBTA, the Port Authority. MAPC is, is Vice Chair of the Council. The Regional Transportation Advisory Council and, and the City of Boston. And then there are a bunch of elected members that are basically cities and towns and the numbers of cities and numbers of towns that are represented are, are limited. So there, I think there are three-year terms. So there are four positions that have to be revoted this year. And none of us worry much about the MPO, but in fact, it's rather important organization because it distributes federal funds to transportation projects like the tip and the, I forget the other acronyms. But these are programs to which cities and towns with specific projects apply. And it goes through an administrative process to get transportation-related stuff done. Anyway, there are four cities and towns that are coming up for either reappointment or replacement. And they are Arlington, the town of Arlington is running again for reappointment. And that's vote number one. The city of Newton is already a member. It's wanting to be revoted in, reelected. The town of Burlington was, is one of the candidates. It is it is running to replace Woburn, which is not applying for reelection. And the town of Norwood is running to be reappointed or reelected. And all four of those, Arlington, Newton, Burlington, and Norwood are unopposed. The nominations closed October 1st and these are the four that are running for those positions. So by law, Sherburne and every other town in the area has to vote. And the chair of the select board is supposed to be the one that votes. The chair's vote may or may not be the same as the whole board, but I think it's good when the whole board agrees. The, the board can appoint any one of us, any one of the four remaining people to cast the ballot. So we have to first vote to approve Arlington, Newton, Burlington, and Norwood as the, as, as the new candidates. We have to agree that we'll vote for those four. And then we have to appoint one of us to actually submit the ballot. So that's what this is about.
So under discussion, I want to emphasize how important the MPO is. I had experience where I was trying to get money for new entrance onto Interstate 95. And in order to get the money, essentially they had to transfer it from, from. essentially, they had to transfer it from from a project for an entrance that was going to be built in Springfield for the casino that was being built there, transferred thirty six million. Thank God for the MPO. Thank God for the the whole process where you can have input and and make your case as to why why a benefit in eastern Massachusetts is more important than a benefit in western Massachusetts. And there the the casino was late in getting built so that we were able to our our project for the new entrance to ninety five was ready to go. And the Springfield project wasn't, so we're able to get that money moved. It makes those decisions. So it is important that every community. So if we were doing a project and we needed federal funds, the transportation project, it would be important to have support for such an endeavor on the MPO.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. That that's correct. I mean, I knew something about it being representative to the MAPC for the town. And it's really interesting how many resources are out there if you know how to navigate and and advocate for your community or your region. So some some of the representatives on the MPO, some of the elected seats are for whole regions as defined by the MAPC. For example, we're part of the southwestern cooperative region or swap. A group of towns that actually don't relate to us very well. Eric is part of the group of metro west communities that form a consortium around Framingham, Wellesley, Needham, etc. Which includes Natick also and probably and Holliston, probably who would fit us better. But in any case, there really are a lot of opportunities there, but you have to keep your ear to the ground.
So in that sense, Marion, would we then be represented by Norwood? Is that what you're saying that they we would be in a region? Is Norwood considered in that region?
Norwood is in the, no, no one's not in Swappy. Norwood's in the Three Rivers Interlocal Council.
So we don't. That's okay. You don't have to look it up. And so what you're saying is that we're really represented by all the towns representatives, not by a specific one that represents Sherburne.
There is the southwest advisory planning committee or swap.
Yep.
That represents nine towns. And so we are represented through swap.
Okay.
Which is run by MAPC. So, you know, I'm not sure who of that group of towns actually, I believe that group actually is. Anyway, I could look up and see who represents us.
No, it's just a curiosity question. I I I don't see. I don't have any other discussion. Does anyone else have any other discussion? Do you want to make a motion with respect to authorizing the vote? And I would suggest for consideration of the board that we nominate Marion to be our voting member.
I might as well on the MAPC person. Okay, I'll. Shall I make a motion?
I think Paul just moved it. You can second it. You can second it if you want.
This is for the towns or for making me the voter?
What do you want? Want to do one vote for both? Is that all right?
Sure.
To authorize Marion to be our representative and to cast her ballot for the four communities she identified.
Second.
All right, Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So we'll get Mr. Bicycle back and and congratulations. Thanks, Marion. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Marion.
Okay, while he's coming back, the next agenda items number five, which is Vicky Relis's consideration of approval of new annual appointment process. So let's give Eric a minute to come back, Vicky.
All right. Thanks for the text.
You there?
No, thanks for texting. I could grab a bite to eat, too.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I figured that.
All right. So are we on number five right now?
I already read it. Yes, and Vicky.
We are. Hi.
Very good. How you doing?
The meeting, we're having this meeting, part of the meeting, only because we wanted to approve the different parts that we've already gone over several times between personnel and back and with the select board. So the three pieces that are here are the annual procedure with proposed changes. That basically is just telling someone so that there's a documented process, a documented timeline of when things come in, when they're posted, and everything is done. The second one is the application for boards committees. And basically, we changed it around a little to put some of the actual direct links for seminars on the teaching on ethics and open meeting law. And I believe we put the bottom bottom part in here as well, which basically says that the point authority has the obligation to keep boards and committee members committees diversified. Goes on to say, I mean, always make your may always always result in reappointment. So as long as you're okay with that, that will go in the past. Diane can disperse that information when people apply. The third piece is basically the piece that goes into your operating agreement. And there were change made with regard to dates and it's pretty much mimics the procedure in terms of of joint appointments, how things are done, when dates, when things is finished, when the appointments are made and how they are made. And then that's it. So that piece is going into the operating agreement. The other two parts define what this actually does. We just have to vote to accept these. We will put everything that belongs.
So this procedure, you vote to accept it, and um, this will be published and basically used consistently each time we go through this. So just to clarify, maybe I missed it. Where will this be published? Will this be like in the webpage? Or maybe there's a question for Diane. Will this be part of regulation?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Um, where will these be published? These revised procedures?
We can put them right on the website under the boards and committees where we have list what we have for open vacancies. We can put that there with that.
And what is this officially consists? Is it rules and regulations? Or is it like a policy of the select board?
Say it again?
What is this? This officially constitute like a policy of the select board? My my being too official about this? Or is it rules and regulations?
Agreement, correct. So it does. It does. It is considered how you operate when you consider appointments, how they're made.
And then you can also put it under the select board department, too, if you want, Eric. We can put it in two places.
Yeah, there's already a sport, yeah, but we put it there, too.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, Eric, I have a couple of comments.
I see Marion has a hand raised, too.
All right, Vicky, this this is really a nice piece of work, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's great when people take the lead and really get stuff done here. It's
helped a lot.
I have a couple of suggestions, though. The application for boards and committees, I think that's a much better format, but my concern is that with the question about have you completed the state ethics and the open meeting law or viewed it online, it implies that you should have done that when you apply. And I'm afraid that putting it right on the initial application form, even though we will require it before anyone can actually work on a committee, putting it on the application form, I think is a bit of a disincentive. If people look at that, they might think, oh, man, I've got to go through these hoops and, you know, what if I don't pass? Or what if this? It's an extra bit of work they have to do to apply.
I don't disagree with you. Diane, do you think it's important to have here? Or can we give it to them as a follow up once they're appointed? They'll have the correct.
Boy, I don't know. You could go either way with that, you know. Well, once we appoint them, what's the incentive for them to 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 look at it? Because now they've already been appointed.
Well, once they're appointed, this is how it always has happened, really. Once they're appointed, then before they can function, I mean, they they have to do this and we they know they have to do it. But it's, I mean, we we want to get the best volunteers that we can.
Maybe what we can do instead of taking it out is say, these will be required after your appointment, but leave them there. So if they want to peruse them, they can go ahead and look at the stuff. Is that where you go to?
Okay.
That was what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, we could say something like, please acknowledge that you will be required to complete this before being before your appointment is completed or whatever.
Something like that.
Just an acknowledgement.
That sounds like a good idea. I like that.
Yeah, I like that. It's not all completely on. They know what they're getting into when they when they can look at it.
But they don't feel they have to do it right now in order even to be considered.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, I'll take care of that.
The other little thing was, let's see, the pages aren't numbered, so it's the page after that application page. The heading is current select board operating procedures with suggested changes. At the end of that first paragraph, which is an introductory paragraph, like the board makes numerous appointments generally one to three years. At the end of that paragraph, there's a sentence vacancies. Oh, there's a period missing. Appointments should be based on merit and qualifications rather than political merit. And I thought political merit isn't just not the right term. I I know what you're getting at. But I wonder if we could just say political considerations or some other word, polit- political merit. I don't know what that is. See what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
I wonder if you could just end the sentence before that, that just they should be based on merit, and I forget the other phrase.
Qualifications.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's the easy fix.
Okay.
I would take out the rather than political merit.
Right.
Even though that, you know.
Yeah, I completely understand where you're coming from on that, but I think.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's implied.
Hopefully, yeah. No, that's fine.
Yeah, so that's it. That's good.
Okay, thank you, Marie. You're good comments.
So I had some comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So I want to follow up on the question that you asked Eric way back when we were talking about this. I had some reservations, and I was told these were only guidelines. And so we weren't locked into a strict draconian set of of rules. And then when we were, when you asked that question, the answer that came back seemed like it was a lot stronger than that. So I want to make it clear, at least to our volunteers, that if someone's out there working hard as a volunteer and is doing the job and is up for reappointment, at least I, as one select board member, am going to give strong strong presumption of reappointment to somebody who's doing the job and is volunteering, giving up of their time. And all these statements that, you know, we're not going to do that. We're, you know, going to be making, there's no guarantee and all that stuff. I I understand the words, and I'm going to vote for them, but I'm voting for them as 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 statements and as warnings and as as admonitions. But I certainly am going to always treat volunteers with with great respect. I cherish every one of them. And if people are are concerned or alarmed that they're going to put in, you know, three years of hard labor for the town of Sherburne and then shown be shown the door preemptorily, that's at least is not going to happen on my for me. And I I don't want these these reforms we're doing to be to cause volunteers to to have a bad taste in their mouth. Let's leave it at that.
I tried to cover a little bit. The last sentence says the representation of the community.
No person is entitled by reason of incumbency to be reappointed. That was your sentence that.
Right.
Yes, I'm going to vote for that, but I just want to reassure every everyone out there, every volunteer out there, if you're doing your job, you're going to have my vote. This is simple as.
One, one, oh, I I just to counteract that, I think one thing that's important to acknowledge here is we don't want future volunteers to be dissuaded like, oh, that board's already full with people who want to stay, so I can't even apply. That's that's, I think, the problem that we've had is we've got people that want to stay on this board, so we're not allowed to apply. That's, I think, the problem comes in. And that's what I think we need to show that future volunteers and people, maybe we have more people out there, but they're intimidated to to actually apply for positions. So we want to just say that it's not always going to be the incumbent. If we get somebody that comes in, that's going to make a board much more diverse and much more productive, then they should be considered. We shouldn't just automatically appoint the incumbent. I think sometimes incumbents do need to be replaced.
I think. Oh, sorry.
If I could, just to follow up on that, I am going to vote for for that language, and I I recognize the validity of what George said. What I'm trying to say is, going back to what Eric's question was, he asked essentially, how binding are they? And if and if I choose to vote for an incumbent because they're doing the job, I don't want to be put in handcuffs and let off in the in an orange jumpsuit because I've done this horrible thing. Because we voted it and all this kind of stuff. This, when we were discussing this before, this was to be guidelines, essentially, and a policy statement. And as I say, I'm going to vote for it on that basis. Not that it's mandatory that incumbents get booted out or people who are doing their jobs get booted out. I appreciate the work that everybody does. I think the board appreciates the work that volunteers do across across the board. So it sounds draconian when you read it, but there I think we're all mindful of the humans, human beings out there who are caring, concerned about the community and and giving her their time and effort in so many wonderful ways. They should be appreciated and cherished.
I agree, Paul, but you know, the other side of the coin is, you know, now and then there is a board member that just does nothing and kind of likes having that on their resume or likes getting together with other people, but just isn't contributing. So I think in the end, it's going to turn out okay. We just don't want. I agree with you, Paul. We don't want to discourage people who are of good faith and trying to do a good job.
I see Nancy Hess, but before I I take Nancy Hess, I do want to say, I don't think there's anything in this that precludes Paul from either voting for or voting against someone based on being an incumbent or not an incumbent. I don't think there's anything in this that actually biases an incumbent or not incumbent. It just basically puts in some language in there that that basically, what do you call it, allows either way. And basically, it makes a statement that, you know, you're not guaranteed because of, you know, what have you, but anyways, all that being said, it's the reason I actually brought up my initial statement about what what's intended for. And the place where I work, there's actually kind of levels of kind of like policies or whatever. There's guidance, the bottom level. There's policy on next level. There's rules and regulations. And then there's bylaws or ordinance, as I should say, there would be bylaws here. I think this goes off basically, even though we we might not use these official labels in a lot of way, this is levels of guidance. It's kind of guidance as drafted by the selectmen. And of course, there's flexibility on it. Frankly, and just the last. And of course, there's flexibility on it. Frankly, in just the last year or so, we have broken our own rules about the whole 30-day advertisement knowingly, even after we enforce it. Sometimes we don't enforce it other times. We do that at a certain discretion. That is something that's actually done. I think this here provides guidance, and good guidance, but special circumstances arise. And that's why it's five members of the board. And if three of us agree, we could actually either waive something, or, or do something, or, you know, call it, do something a little different off of that. I do want to say that. I'm going to see Nancy, but I don't want to get on this big kind of random thing about, like, should someone be reelected, or reappointed, or not. But Nancy, please.
I just was going to point out that perhaps it would comfort Paul somewhat. If you look at the new application, at the bottom of the application, it does talk about the obligation to keep boards and committees diversified, but it finishes with not always resulting reappointment, but should not be interpreted as a lack of appreciation for service given. And, and the not is bold and italicized. So it's, it's a thank you in a way to, to make people realize that if they aren't reappointed, isn't that, that what they've done is not appreciated by the board.
Yes, very well said. Very well said. Jeff, did you have a comment?
I was just going to just add, you know, it is unusual, then, Vicky and George can relate, just that advisory is the only committee, I think, with term limits that I know of, you know. And so it turned out to be good, you know, you ended up having to train new people, but you got a lot of fresh ideas by having two or three people turn over every three years, or whatever it was. So the other aspect, and this is what George said about not discouraging people, is getting new people to town engaged, you know, and also creating, I call it succession planning, where you have people on the committee who've been on there for two or three years, and people who've maybe been on there for 10 to 12 years, but you don't have, you know, a committee with everybody that's been there 15 years. And, you know, one or two people decide to leave, it's, it's a big disruption, sort of. I mean, we were fortunate in the planning board, but we had that sort of happen with Marion and John Higley, both leaving for different reasons, leaving the planning board at the same time. And they had enormous shoes to fill. So having sort of a succession plan for each committee, so that it's got new members and older members to keep the flywheel going, I think is a good thing, too.
Good point. All right, is there any discussion about this policy? I like the policy, like the guidance. So I caught myself right there, didn't I?
Can I make a motion to, to adopt these with Marion's change to the application?
Sure. Yeah, I think we've already saved.
And the one, and the one other sentence.
On that one other sentence, yep.
Yes.
Political.
Taking out the not, you're taking out the political merit part, yes.
I second the, George's motion.
Okay, very good. Motion and second. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I'm also, I. Vicky, thank you so much for the efforts on this.
Thank you, Nancy. I know you worked together, and Diane as well. You did a great job.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, my agenda back there. A pretty, pretty quick meeting. And that routine business, do we have any select board reports?
I just want to say one thing. Sorry, I make it a little mushy, but just want to thank everybody who's reached out to me over the last week. It's been a hard week, so thank you.
Thanks for being here.
How about town administrator?
The only thing I wanted to say was the reminding about the training coming up, which we already talked about at the beginning. So just hope everybody can attend that.
November 3rd at 6:30, correct?
Yes.
And the Zoom link will be on the regular town calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I just want to comment that I thought the, that first training session was really excellent. And I wish that I had had that right in the very beginning, and I started on planning board. And I was glad that everyone got to do it. And I think it should be sort of a periodic refresher, that we should make kind of institutionalize, in a way.
That's, that's a good idea, Marion. The, every two years, we're all supposed to be doing the ethics online training. So we could use that as a good reminder that we should be doing this at the same time.
But there were elements in the Zoom presentation that were not really clear in the ethics course that I've taken, I don't know how many times now, particularly like the public record issues. That's not very well covered by the state program.
No, no, not at all. No. Yeah, we will, we will do that.
I actually have a commitment that night, and I don't think I can get out of it, but I'm going to try. So it'll be recorded also, you said?
Yes.
Yep. And I could talk for about public records, by the way, but I won't. Vicky?
Just note, talk about what Marion pointed out. So we have, town has a software system that follows all of the people that are in committees and boards and appointed or not appointed. It has all the data in there. So being input now with everything that's, we have documented Jackie. I worked on it a little with Jackie, and then he's doing something with one of the people in her office. So when that's done, hopefully be able to run reports to see who's done committee, who's done the training and who hasn't. Because technically, if you haven't done the training, you can't vote on the committee. So some people, I don't think are finished training, and are acting like that they can do whatever they can, which they really can't. But, so I think this software might be an easier way to make sure we monitor people that are doing it. I, I'm guilty of it. When I first started getting involved, I had no clue. I had to fill this out before I started doing stuff. You know, it's just helpful to have a reminder down the road. That's it.
Where can we go for the training from last week? I obviously couldn't be there. And do you have a link to it, Diane, that's on the web?
Yes, it's online. We can send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to recognize Jackie. I have a feeling she's going to say something about the state training, state ethics training.
Yeah, hi. Thank you very much. So the actual, what I want to say about the software is that it doesn't capture when people do the ethics training. We have a separate spreadsheet in the office that we track when people come in and fill out the acknowledgement forms when they get sworn in, and then actually when they send the certificate to us. So there are people, unfortunately, that don't follow up, but we're not required to babysit people.
I thought their certificate automatically prints the date you do it. Doesn't, when you have the, when you get minded.
Yeah, it does. But not everyone sends it back. You know, a lot of people are very good at it. But there are people that, when they come and get sworn in, they don't necessarily send this, you know, do the training and send the ethics, and send a certificate in. We do track it, though, but it's not on the, it's not on the board community software.
So when people complete it online, the certificate does not automatically get electronically transferred to the, to the town clerk.
No, they have to send it to me.
You have to give, send it to, the certificate to Jackie.
Yeah, I mean, I create an Adobe out of it. I email it to Jackie. That's how I've done it, always. I think that should be an expectation. I know we just had a whole talk about how, you know, we don't want to harsh on volunteers. But if you're voting on something, especially something of the more significance on the policy regulatory level, everyone should complete that training every two years and have the certificate with the town clerk. Am I wrong?
You're right.
Eric, the laws that, in the past, it's just been, the laws required us to distribute it and remind people, but we, we never had any collection back. It was just the distribution. So Jackie has been trying to connect the pieces so that there is, you know, some more teeth to it by actually us collecting the results of it.
Jack, I'm going to follow up with something, just with you offline.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. All right, any other select board reports? How about, how about you, David? Any town administrator reports?
No, that's what kicked that off.
All right. Very good.
Thanks.
All right. Well, any further ado, I'm, as chair, I deem that a executive session is warranted for the agenda items, as previously read by the town administrator. And I move that we enter into executive session to discuss those items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul? Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I'm also, I. Very good. Please stop the recording. We're now on executive session. First thing will be the library.